All right, um, let's call the September twenty-six, twenty-eighteen Heinsberg Planning Commission Meeting to order. So, first order of business is agenda changes. Anybody with an agenda change?
I have a couple. Kate reminded me that I must have been having a minor brain freeze when I was putting this together. The minutes that need to be reviewed are not the minutes of August twenty-second, but instead are the minutes of September twelve. That's what was in your packets, so it's just a typo on the agenda. More importantly, I, we've been talking about official map provisions and village area design standard open space provisions. And, uh, in my brain, I conflated them. You have a second bullet item under official map provisions that says discuss legal review by town council. I even mentioned it in my email to you. Town council is reviewing the design standards, not the official map. So, um, I'm gonna give you those comments when I give you the peer review comments from all these other planners that have agreed to look at the design standards too, uh, at your ne- hopefully at your next meeting. So, just scratch that off the, uh, the agenda.
All right, anything else?
Uh, there's a few other announcements under other business, but it's other business, so we'll get to it then.
So, we're scratching, discuss legal review by town council.
Right, because that was, it's under the official map provisions topic. It should have been the village area design standards, and not gonna talk about that at all. I'm gonna package that up for you, and, uh, we have that plus the peer review comments.
All right, with that, we'll move on to agenda item number two, public comments for non-agenda items. Unfortunately, there's no one in the audience tonight, so we'll quickly move on to item three. Official map revisions, review landowner outreach letter.
Yeah, so to review, we've been cycling on the official map for many meetings, and, uh, I think at the last one, we got to the, largely to the end of all of your comments and desires for changes which I made. And we talked about, um, getting it out to affected landowners with a letter soon. Uh, and you wanted to see the draft of that at the meeting. Barbara and Rolf had agreed to review it ahead of the meeting, and, um, Barbara was able to give me some comments that I worked into it. So, you have that in front of you. There's nothing, uh, sacrosanct about the language. If you'd like it changed further, or format different, or whatever you want, I'm happy to make changes. It's a little wordy. I tend to be a little wordy, and I know that it's better to be less wordy and stuff like this so people actually pick it up and read it, so.
I kinda like the explanation.
I would favor more wordy.
I wonder if we should be a little more direct right in the beginning, like, you're receiving this letter because your property may be, may be affected, um...
Right, rather than saying, "We want your feedback" because it could impact your property, you're saying the reason you're getting this letter is because your prop-
It's gonna affect your property.
I think that's a good suggestion.
Add a sentence before that. I, I like that sentence.
No, yeah.
That you have, but I li- that's a good idea.
I'm just worried that people will take a glance and think, "Well, this is going out to everybody. I don't need your data."
Yep.
Yeah, that's a good point. Okay, I'll make that change. You are, I like the "you are receiving this letter" opener, because-
Yeah, very good.
Then people are like, "Oh, there is a reason. It's not just junk mail." Well, hopefully they don't say that.
But I think your explanations are very good, Alex and Barbara.
It's real good that we're doing this in written form in a conscious way. There's been issues in the past where owners got caught short all of a sudden. They felt that they were ignored.
Are we sending the map with it?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, my, uh, the second paragraph says, "See enclosed draft map and the description," so it's gonna go out with the map and that, uh, set of descriptions of what these facilities are.
All as a draft for their input.
This is simply a draft.
A draft too.
Yep.
So, James, help me wordsmith just a little bit more on that first sentence. You are receiving this letter because...
We could say like-
The planning commission is considering a proposal that would affect your property, something like that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I put "could" instead of "would." Would sounds a little more definite than "could."
Unless we're... Who are we sending this to?
Anybody who has a official map element on their property.
So, that's-
It's "could."
A "would."
It "would" if it were adopted as-is. It "could" if, assuming that, you know, maybe things would change.
I think "could" sounds, that's a good point. It sounds better because it hasn't been decided yet. I mean, this is a proposal, right?
Well, you could say, "If this map is adopted, it will affect your property," as shown, as it's shown right now. I, I don't wanna just let people think that it's, it's wide open, Marie, you know, I want them to under- It's, it's negotiable, certainly. We want their comments, but this, this is kind of how we think it might go down.
But, but that's sort of explained, um, further down in, in the letter, if they read it, which they should. I would, I can't imagine you wouldn't, but-
Yeah, I can't either.
In my thinking.
Right.
I can't speak for other people. But it is explained.
It would not affect their property if they didn't propose any development. It only, it only impacts if they were to propose development. So, even if it were adopted as-is, it probably "could" is the more, uh, accurate.
And you do explain that down, further in the letter, so.
Well, I, I think I got it. Thank you for the-
So, you're saying that if no development is proposed for a parcel, it-
The official map is not-
Doesn't have any impact.
Doesn't, doesn't have any impact, yeah. I mean, it's still there as sort of a discussion and planning tool, but as far as an actual regulatory impact, and it is a regulatory document, there isn't one. It only click, it only, um, only clicks in if somebody proposes a development that, that is inconsistent with the map.
Right. Okay.
And I brought that up because at the end, it's a little different. It says "could," "could," you know, the part about the town buying the property. It could be this, it could be that, so.
So, what else you got for suggested changes?
I have nothing.
So, what's your schedule on this now that we're saying this letter is good? And, and we haven't talked about it yet, but the official map, I think we have gone over enough times that we can, let's put it out and see what happens.
That was my impression from the last meeting. You were happy as long as those changes got made. Um, so I think, I would love to get it out this week, but realistically, it's probably gonna be Monday. So, um, forget what the date is on Monday. We may, I don't know if we've slipped into October at that point.
It's the first.
The first, yeah, so unfortunately, it'll have an October date on it rather than September, but.
And you're going to basically take the official map, look at all the parcels that have an effect, that's something we've said has to happen there, and that's the list of people who get the-
Yep.
And it's invitation, invitation to talk about it with them. I mean, I'm thinking there's a cover letter that explains this.
This is the cover letter, yeah, yeah. So, this, this letter basically says, under "how do I provide input," "Talk to me," or "come to one of the upcoming planning commission meetings." There's four of them coming up, and you can come to anyone you want.
And we'll talk about it, yep.
Yep, well, so that'll be a reg-, you know, a regular item on those four meeting agendas, right at the front, front end of the meeting.
Yep. So, do we need to make a motion to, for you to do that? You're just gonna, you're gonna do that?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just wanted to run the letter language by you as you requested, so if you're good with that, I'm, I'm good to send it out as soon as I can, as soon as I can make it happen, probably Monday.
Okay, sounds good to me, Alex.
Okay, will do.
Okay, so it looks like we are then on to village area architectural design standards.
Yeah, so, so John prompted or posed this, uh, I don't know, a couple meetings ago. We, we're gonna apply for this municipal planning grant, right, uh, to try to bring in some additional consulting horsepower to, to, to help you work with the community on the next batch of design standards, even as you're taking feedback on the, this first batch for open space. Um, and John's thought was, "Well, you know, we could at least brainstorm a little bit even before we begin in earnest on that." So, I figured I'd put it on the agenda and give you an, uh, an opportunity to do that. I think it's good to look at the existing design standards because we do have some, and quite some time ago, I, I excerpted a whole series of those out of the regulations and put them in a six-page document, I think, that I, I put in your packets. There's copies on the table. I think we've, we've got, we've looked at them briefly before. So, it's not as if we don't, already our regulations help shape the way development is supposed to look and work. Uh, we do, uh, and we do it in a number of different ways that that document goes through. Some of them are, um, related to, uh, site planning, so, uh, where sidewalks should be and, and the fact that there should be sidewalks, where parking areas should be in relation to buildings and the frontage of properties, connectivity between sites, those sorts of site-level, uh, design standards. Uh, and then we also do have some building design standards, and, um, uh, the ones that spring to mind for me are the garage setback standard, where we talk about a garage being set back a certain number of feet, uh, behind the, the front face of the primary, uh, structure, and, uh, the roof lines, where roofs are, need to be moderately to steeply pitched, unless they are a flat roof that emulates the, the historic buildings that we have that are flat roof today. So, those are a couple of the existing design standards. We go beyond that, and it's in that document in terms of landscaping. We have pretty rigorous landscaping requirements that, you know, should be seen as design standards. It's green, green infrastructure is just as important as gray and infrastructure on a site. But I think what I was driving at, and I think what you were thinking of a while back about architectural design standards, is to take a little bit more of a look at the building themselves, and, and how to give the community more comfort that, uh, we are not gonna see, uh, buildings that are very much out of character with, with the existing village, while still allowing for some innovation, because it's not like we're gonna be rebuilding, um, uh, in a hundred years back. We, we have to build in, you know, today's time. That's, I, that's about as far as I've thought through it. I've looked at a lot of these form-based codes in this, in Chittenden County and some surrounding communities, um, and, you know, there's, there's all manner of specificity in terms of, uh, window treatments and first-floor heights and, uh, things of that nature. Uh, but I think it's, I think it's really up to you, you know, what kinds of things do you think about when, when you, when you think about the goal, which I, which I think is to, again, provide better clarity to developers and the community that what's gonna be built is something they can be proud of and will be visually interesting as well as functional and useful. The only, the only other sort of, um, design standard on that front that, that I've been thinking of, is, is some kind of, uh, requirement for multi-story buildings potentially in certain parts of the village growth area, or, or a way to emphasize the desire for that if it's not a flat-out requirement. There was a lot of angst about the Kenny Drugs Building when it was proposed, in part because it was proposed as an eleven thousand square foot, single-story box. And the box was part of the angst, I think, during the review, but the single-story nature was also part of the angst, thinking like, "We're trying to have density in the village. We need to go up, uh, at least two stories." Uh, and, and that project didn't accomplish that, but did, uh, accomplish, you know, a more interesting series of roof lines than was originally part of the proposal. Uh, so, I'm not sure exactly if you're all on the same page about the need for multi-story buildings or some percentage of a project having multi-story buildings, but it's, but it's one that I'm, I'd be interested in talking about. John, you're the architect though. Do you have any ideas?
I, I would say, first off, from, from my point of view, this, particularly getting into, um, talking about the buildings themselves and, and what, what we will approve of, so to speak, that's a delicate area, and I think we have to be very sensitive to what, what it is that we do feel is important about the forms and the materials and the colors and those kind of basic things. How much of that do we feel is necessary that we say, "These, we'd like you to be within these parameters?" I just think we should all have that in the back, I have it in the back of my mind. We, we cannot be, uh, demanding about what we want without, I think, very, very good reasons, very solid reasons. And I, I think of all of the things that you've looked at around Chittenden County, around Champlain Valley. For me, it would be helpful to see a summary, a, a visual summary. Uh, you know, here in Milton, this is what they say, and here in Charlotte, here's what they say. Whatever the towns are, what do they say about form-based?
About form-based kinds of design requirements?
Or things, or, or aspects, elements that would be considered form-based. They may not call it that. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand what you're saying. That'd be an interesting way to summarize it in a visual way.
Summarize it visually, like, here's what other towns have done.
Well, in a lot of these form-based codes, and granted, just so we're clear, I know there's, there's some interest. Rolf's not here. I know he's very interested. In a form-based code, we, that's not what we're talking about here, and, and my impression from what we've heard from people in that field is that that's a much larger project. But most of the form-based codes that have been adopted or form-based light kinds of codes do have visual descriptions or pictures of what, what they're talking about. They're not a hundred percent describing everything that's in the, in the written part of the code, but that would be an interesting, I think that'd be an interesting, um, exercise for me, or the consultant we hire, to, or maybe one of you, to, uh, to pull some of those pictures in for a, like, a PowerPoint show for your, your meeting to go through and be like, "Well, this is what Shelburne, you know, indicates for, uh, this kind of part of their code, and it's a picture, not words."
We don't have to start at zero and create all of this. A lot of work has already been done by professionals, by other towns.
Yeah.
Either a light version or a full-blown version. Let's look at that. I've looked at some, and I know there's information out there that I think would be, would be helpful for all of us to kind of come to a, an understanding, if not an agreement about, "These are the elements that are most important, and that's what we need to, to talk about in our code," whatever we call it.
John, I've heard in the past, I'm trying to remember which project it was, um, I don't think it was the Hanaford Review. I think it was a different project, might have been Kenny, um, where either a developer or their representative, I know George Bedard made this case when he was on the planning commission, that Heinsburg has such an eclectic mix of architecture and construction that there is no defining, there are no defining features that, that you would pick out in a, in a code, and that in fact, uh, Heinsburg is defined by the lack of, of consistency. So, uh, you know, maybe we should continue to be wide open and allow for that. And I always thought that that was, um, an overstatement that there were in fact some defining features of Heinsburg, at least the village area sort of building form, but you, you're an architect. You look at that. What do you think?
I think it's also a mixture, but there's an era, a time period that holds it all together. Not just what we see, but what we know up here about this all, most of this all happened. This pattern of development, maybe more than the individual buildings, but the pattern that the buildings form on the ground with the roads, that happened a hundred years and more ago. Those lines were laid down.
Yeah.
I don't think it, it doesn't seem to me valid to, to then try to reproduce that environment, as you said. Today, we have different meets of transportation. We have different relationships between families. That needs to be what we're thinking about now, not, not these other patterns. But I do think there are culturally stuff that holds it together as a, a, an image in my mind. When I first came to Heinsburg, Heinsburg was where I lived in Mechanicsville and down Mechanicsville Road, uh, to Lampman's where I worked. And I, that was, that was my Heinsburg. I didn't connect at all because that's where I was active. And now we're, people are active in a much bigger area, much, much larger physical space, and so there's more variety in what they're experiencing. I think all of that comes into it. So, we need to be broad in our acceptance of what is appropriate, and, and very cautious about saying, "You have to do this."
So, I think we need to be broad. I think it'll be easier to see what we don't want. Right? What is it that we don't wanna see? Right? So, I go to the big box store versus, "Let them be open. Let them design whatever, and whatever the market wants, and whatever the, you know, economy wants," or whatever. But I'm more about, "What do we not want?" You know, we talk a lot in these things about, "We don't wanna be any street USA," and we don't wanna be, or any town USA. We don't want, um, to be strip mollish. We don't want, you know, there's, there's things in here that we're trying not to be.
Right.
And I think we should just get very clear about what we don't want to be.
Bring, continue that through to the discussion of architecture.
So, what I'm saying is, rather than being, to John's point, being very specific about, "We want, I want this. I want brick facades. I want that." Turn it around the other way and say, "Do whatever you want, except that." Do you know what I mean?
It's interesting. I haven't read very many codes that, that approach it that way. It's usually the other way, where it's very prescriptive about, you know, how much of the building's frontage has to be windows, how, you know, how high, how high the first floor has to be. But I, but I'll be honest with you, as we're, as John was talking about it, I thought that it would be interesting to do a slideshow of sort of the contemporary architecture in, in Chittenden County. I, I mean, we all go to Burlington, right, and this is never gonna be a Burlington. We're not a, we're not a city. We're not a downtown. But, um, it's not just in Burlington that people are seeing a lot of these very boxy, contemporary residential, multifamily apartment houses with the metal siding and, and, um, and I, it'd be interesting to show pictures of that and get impressions of people of like, "Is that, that's modern sort of architecture for multifamily dwellings. Is that appropriate in Heinsburg?" Or, or are people gonna have the reaction like, "No, put that on the prohibited list," because I don't think that fits here.
I mean, it isn't just multifamily dwellings. I'm thinking, I, you know, I have a brother-in-law that lives outdoors, and you walk around that community, and most of the houses are, you know, colonial's capes, blah, 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 blah. And, you know, someone built a house that looks like it should probably be in southern Florida, facing the ocean. You know, it's, it's kinda got these, you know, wings on it with flat roof, you know, with big kinda, you know, spaces to be up top. And, okay, I mean, you get used to that over time, but, you know, think about that, because it, it's not just the big buildings.
Yeah, but we want a development, usually a development, they have five different build plans, maybe? So, you have five different, different houses.
Yeah, I wonder in a residential setting, especially single-family, if having an oddball is kind of neat.
Right, do we wanna say we want more than just five designs? I mean, most big developments you go into, it's not very many different houses.
Economics for the developer.
What's that?
I think that's economics for the developer too.
Sure.
I mean, this, this board's primary charge is not economics for developers.
It's flip the plan, turn it around, turn it around, stick a different color on with a different material than the same one down.
You're gonna get something that looks all the same.
Right, maybe, maybe you're on to something there.
Yeah, I think we maybe talked about that at a prior meeting.
Other patterns, like I built a house on my land, but the neighbor built another house. He didn't care.
What?
He built his own style of house.
Right.
Right.
I mean, every house on Police Road, most of them are all different. But in a development, they're not.
And on our main street, most of them are different. You can see them related.
I mean, you got a couple that are the same, like, but most of them are different.
Most of them are different, and even the same ones, if you look close, it's, they're a little different, so they're like brothers, but-
It's kind of interesting to think that maybe, maybe a design standard in Heinsburg is not uniformity, but rather variety when it comes to a certain kind of construction. With, maybe with a list or a visual, uh, list of, of, "Don't do this."
In these areas, and I'm not aware of a zoning regulation, subdivision regulation that talks that way, like you said.
Yeah, it's funny. It's mostly-
Don't do this, don't do that.
It's mostly what you want.
They try to point people, "Go do this."
Where, you know where we do do that in the regs, and we did it recently in the housekeeping changes, was, was with outdoor lighting. You know, it, we thought it would be helpful to have an actual diagram that showed, "These are the kinds of outdoor fixtures you should not use, and these are the kinds of fixtures that are compliant." So, I suppose you could do a little bit of that with, um, with either home construction or, or commercial construction. I think that there really are two tracks to this conversation, that, you know, residential, single-family home construction and even multifamily development like we have in Green Street is one flavor of, of new build. But, um, you know, the commercial construction, whether it's the NRG facility, or the Dark Star Lighting Building, or, uh, Obashan Plaza, or the Jiffy Mart, uh, there's a whole lot of different things going on with those kind of buildings. And, um, from everything I've read in the past, especially as you get more franchise businesses and not necessarily, um, all local yokel businesses, those larger chains will build to what the community wants the design to be, even if they have a, a sort of cookie cutter, um-
Series of building models that they do.
When they bump into a community like Stowe or some other community that has sort of more strict design standards, they will adapt to them. Kenny's, I think, was a good example of that. They, they had, you know, a design. They got some pushback, and what the developer kept telling the board was, "They are so excited to be in Heinsburg that they're giving us the ability to, to design the building in a different way, but they need the functional space to be the same, so we can dress it up and turn it and make different things happen with the roof lines, but we have to sort of work with their functional space." Yeah, absolutely. I, I mean, most of the other new Kenny buildings are brick. So, anyways, I'm just putting that out there that it, um, there, there may be a substantive difference in the design between commercial residential.
Neighbor here doesn't want their house devalued because you got a odd-looking house next to it.
Weird house here.
I mean, I, I like your idea of a truly heterogeneous kinda, you know, mix of, mix of housing. You know, I also like the idea of saying, you know, "Commercial needs to be multi-story." I, I like the wording with, with pitch roots, right, um, with some leeway there. I think that, you know, those things alone are-
Those are pretty powerful.
Pretty, pretty powerful, yeah.
I would, I would add, you say residential, commercial, I would add the semi-commercial-industrial kind of category, because there we- Cause there we are, we would not want to impair them from building a functional building. And sometimes that looks very different. Than residential or commercial. So it's maybe not as big a category land-wise, but in terms of impact. Particularly where we expect it in town now, with Village Northeast in particular. You know, that, there's a category there that we wanna say something about the building there.
Yeah, provides more flexibility in the, in the roofline designer, what have you.
I mean, there's, there's this great, Columbus, Ohio has such a variety of. Like world famous architect-designed buildings. It's like a museum, Ralph goes crazy about that, that town. Because, and it, and it came about by a very unusual arrangement that we, we won't do. I mean, somebody said, if you hire the architects that I want you to hire. For your major public buildings, I will pay for the engineering and design completely. And so he got, they, the town Columbus got all these different architect-designed buildings. That are like, you know, prize-winning structures. So how does that translate to us? Can we create an incentive which was basically that, I'll pay for all the engineering and design?
Wow, that's mighty generous of you.
No, 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 no. Not me.
So we do, just so everybody understands, we do have differing design standards by district right now in the, in the village growth area. The, the village area design standards that are in that excerpt, five point twenty-two or twenty-three, I forget the section number. That talk about moderate to steeply pitched roofs and garage setbacks and all that. Don't apply in the commercial districts, so, or the industrial districts. So tho- those districts are, are governed by a separate set of design standards. And they're, they're less than, than the village district, the village northeast, the village northwest. So, you know, that's another thing to look at is, you know, to what extent do we wanna make those standards more consistent? Or does, does it, does it really make sense to treat areas that are designed for commercial industrial uses? Or just commercial industrial uses, wherever they are, differently?
I don't think it makes sense to treat a commercial area differently, right, than, than a mixed-use area. Have any industrial area like, like I want, that makes sense.
I wonder about the type of use though, Joe. A, a retail use seems like it should be able to meet the sort of aesthetically pleasing. Attributes that folks might like to ascribe to typical buildings in a village, and that would be to their benefit anyway. But, you know, a, a purely light industrial use, maybe, maybe not? Maybe it depends on size of building, I don't, I don't know.
You know, I, I, I think, I think you probably need to, you know, look through your different industrial areas. And not have a one-size-fits-all, obviously, you want, you know. The industrial area around NRG, right, to look different, right, than probably, you know, I want. Right, because it, it has a different relationship to the village, it has a different relationship to 116, it has different uses. And for, for things like, you know, the NRG area, right, you already have some, some great buildings there. You don't wanna clash with that, right, you wanna, you know, you wanna work with that. Whereas you got very different uses down here in the gravel pit right now.
Or the cheese plant, and that industrial.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I, I, I really, I really think when, when you're, when you're talking about industrial areas. Because they're so disparate place to place in this town, you know. I think you need to treat everyone separately.
So I hear what you're saying, but my, my hope is, so if I think of the cheese plant. Or more importantly, I think of Commerce Street today, right, which are both commercial districts and, right. After five, when everybody goes home, what's going on down there? They're dead zones until other things come in, like Frost Beer Works opened up.
Don't think about today, think about tomorrow, in, in trying to, you know, put these things together.
Like, you know, it's, so if I think of those things, you know, it's, like I said, Frost Beer Works showed up, and now I see people there using that space. Or I think about the public house, now people are drawn more to that area.
I mean, you, you mentioned earlier prohibitions, and you specifically listed, you know, strip malls, I would think you want that, right? Carried, carried into the commercial district. I mean, why, why wouldn't you want that prohibition on Commerce Street going forward?
I would.
Referring to Frost Beer Works, that, that's more like retail now, really, than it, it, honestly.
Gotta make it to, to sell it.
Can their stuff.
They do, but that's light industrial and, and sort of a mix with retail now. Commerce Street is industrial, but it's becoming more retail, I think, I think you're gonna see it swing that way.
I think we should encourage that to some degree.
Right, but that's very different than down where I am, that's heavy industrial, very, very different. That's why I don't think you should lump them all together, that would never work for people.
I, I think, I think you gotta treat them differently, you may, you may even want to do things like, you know, let's, let's talk about the industrial area in South Heinsberg. I mean, clearly what happens, you know, way back in the gravel pit, right, with heavy machinery, has, has one demand. Well, is you bring things forward closer to 116. You may, I mean, you may want different standards there, I would think you do.
Possibly.
Brattleboro has design standards.
No, it's not in the village.
By district, so I, I, you know, it's, and those, that's an example I can, I can put together for you along John's suggestion. So it's not like it's necessary that the design standards for the village growth area be consistent across the whole. It could be tailored, you know, by district.
Well, I thought, it says village area, I mean, that, I thought that's what we were talking about tonight. Just the village, not anywhere else in town, for this purpose.
So I have a question on page three, it's technically five, two, two, three, seven large buildings. So this isn't commercial, this is regular, what's a large building in a residential neighborhood? I'm just thinking of, as it comes before the DRB, page three of six? The bullet seven, right above the northern gateway area designs, there's large buildings. So. You know, I, I get what it's trying to get after, right? But when does that kick in? And I'm just, I, I try to read these things from the eyes, I haven't been on the DRB, but I try to read them from the eyes of the DRB, and if I'm looking at this.
So this is a, this is a building standard within the village growth area, not including the commercial district. So this would be village, or village northwest, or village northeast.
So what's a large building, is it a multi-story, multi-family apartment building? Is it just a?
I think you'd probably want a quantitative.
Yeah, you're right, it's not, it's not well-defined there.
You know, if you said something like floor area two X or greater than the average floor area of, you know. Of a building in the, you know, village zone, it's quantitative.
In our town, I would say the NRG buildings are large buildings. The Saputo or Redstone, or whatever it's called.
Those are easy.
Those are big, large buildings, but that's about it in town.
Is the community school a large building?
Yeah, that would be a large building also.
So what is, like, so, so other examples here, so if somebody was putting up a multifamily residence. That looked like, I don't know, if you, you drive up Williston Road, right, between Tass Corners and, and Industrial Ave Corners. And they're putting up an apartment building, kinda one road, one road behind, like.
Really? I haven't seen that.
You haven't seen, well, it's, it's, the siding's green right now, until they put the final siding. It's the underboard, so is, is that a large building or not?
I think it would have to be defined by square feet.
I, I think so.
I would think like the building in South Village, where they have a few multifamily buildings there, I believe.
It was Lenny's shoes.
Well, there's no doubt that Jeff's pointed out a good place to approve the standard by giving it a number. But for me, I think of just Heinsberg, and I think the buildings you pointed out, Marie, are the extremely large buildings. I think that a single-family home, like the Russell House across the street. Is not a large building, but it is a large-ish, single-family home. I think that the multi-family dwellings that Alan and Nancy Norris are building on the southern edge of vil- of the village. Those are large buildings in my mind, they're much bigger than, than most single-family homes. I think the Kenny Drugs is a large building, I think the Obashan Plaza is a large building. Is the mobile station a large building? I'm not sure it is actually, but.
What about the vet office?
Yeah, I think you're right, it's like, I'm not sure, I'm not sure on that front.
I think you need a square foot test, that also takes no account the number of stories.
Some kind of volume.
Like total, yeah.
Some, something vertical.
Like where's the, you know.
It's a good catch, Jeff, you should have been on the planning commission back in two thousand and seven, when we put this in.
We don't say anywhere extra-large buildings, Alex, so maybe we need to say that.
Need different sizes, large, extra-large, extra, extra-large, oh, we're out of those.
I think square footage is a really good determination, determinator, and I know in the work that I used to do, like with apartment buildings. I think when it got up to over four, then it really, or four made it pretty good size.
Four thousand square feet.
Units, in units, in apartment buildings, we talked about units.
Yeah, what if they're tiny?
Yeah, that's, that's not the, the norm in Heinsberg, I'm just talking about here. But, yeah, we had to look at those differently, which we, you know, just go down the street here, and you can think of one.
In square foot slash volume of.
Four thousand's pretty big.
Because that's kinda like.
Especially if it's all on one floor.
I mean, what the. What the person from outside sees is, is not the number of units, he sees, he sees a volume, you know, a container.
But in the terms of multi-family.
All right, well, I'll make a note to, now we need to adjust that one for sure.
I, I also think that it would be useful for us all to have images of. Buildings in all these different categories that we like, that we think are good buildings. Good examples in these different categories, and there's so many images available online for.
I mean, most of these developers, they don't just subdivide it, and then you come in and build whatever house you want online. Right? I mean, most of it's spec, I believe.
Well, I think they have a certain number of designs, like the Thistle Hill case, where, you know, they had a certain number of designs. And then the recession hit, and they had to adapt a little bit, but they did build some on spec, and then the others were sort of as.
So how would you go about telling the developer you want twenty different designs, and it can only be five of the same thing?
Exactly those words.
Say that to them.
Yeah, I think it would, it would, it would show up in the regulations in some manner, and then the DRB would impose it as a condition. And the developer would get the approval knowing that they had to have a certain amount of variety in the, in the project.
And then if they phase it, you gotta.
I think, I think that is.
Makes it a little trickier.
You'd wanna say that, that two designs do not con- you know, constitute the same design flipped, you know.
That doesn't count.
And, and I think that's part of why some people have had a, a lukewarm reaction to that development. You know, it's got sidewalks on every, both sides of the street, it's got street trees, it's, right now, it's insulated, cause it doesn't have any connecting streets. So in some ways, it's a wonderful neighborhood, but I, I've heard that some people sort of feel like it's. A kind of plain vanilla architecture.
People who live there.
Because it is.
No, just other people in town. Folks who live there probably love it, right?
You know, they're happy living there.
They own their homes.
It's a nice neighborhood, I think.
It's a nice neighborhood, but eventually those trees will get even bigger.
Yes, right, it's starting.
Shady, some of the sidewalks will kinda get cracks, and, I mean, it'll start to look like lived in, and people will like that. I think there's major things that need to be done with the design of our buildings, by the way. I think that we do a very poor job of responding to the needs for energy efficiency. For the solar energy that we have available, it's, whenever the sun shines, it's there. And, and kind of the social spaces that we create with our buildings in neighborhoods. That allow other kinds of levels of, like all the neighborhood kids playing together. Is there a good way, is there a good place where they can do that? I think we missed the boat on, on all kinds of levels with that, beyond what we can. I think we, any planning commission can, can engender without just really strict rules. We would have to be developers and say, no, we're gonna build it this way. And for these reasons, but.
Well, we could certainly take some pictures right here in town. And this is part of what I want the consult to do, if we can get them on board, is to help us with visual preference surveys. And be able to use examples both from within Heinsberg and without, but, I don't know, it seems like we have decent fodder right here. To be able to, you know, take a look at several different types of single-family homes. Both modern, contemporary, and built from, you know, past age. Take a look at several different kinds of commercial structures. And, and, and just be able to get a feel for what, what people are most attracted to. Or most interested in, or what turns them off. That can be a little dangerous, cause those are actually people's properties in town, but.
Last time I took pictures for this board, I got yelled at.
Taking a picture of somebody's house?
I, I, I don't disagree with you, but I do feel that there are examples outside of our town. And our individual experiences even, that would be helpful. And that means looking all over the world for good examples of, of good design. What, what in your head is good design? And maybe have a few reasons why you think it's good design, and bring that here. Now, that means everybody's gotta go online and look for pictures and save them. And I don't know what, put them on a thumb drive, bring them to you.
Bring them in, we'll put them on.
We'll show them on the screen, you have to be a little technical, willing to deal with that.
More likely, we're gonna hopefully get a consultant who can help facilitate that, and maybe has those images already in there.
And some of us, like me, would go and look and find some of my own, and I would show those, that's fine. But I, I think those visuals would be helpful for us to, to define eventually words. And regulations, maybe illustrations.
Yeah, my only caution is that it, it needs to reflect this community. And needs to grow organically out of what this community is and what this community wants. And so at the outset, I think it makes perfect sense to look at other places and other people's standards. But it shouldn't be a copy and paste exercise, it should be a, that's an interesting thing they did, this is a. But here in Heinsberg, this is what makes the most sense, cause we don't have, for example, the Main Street block that Bristol has. And we never, you know, we're unlikely to ever have that, or Waterbury.
We have to put it in context of Heinsberg, I will not submit any Chinese pagodas as examples.
I don't know, Ralph, Ralph likes to show some piazzas in various places in Europe, but.
Can I submit what I don't like? I guess I'm pessimist. Yeah, but I think, you know, I, I just think about feedback that, you know, over the years, at like DRB meetings and here. It's, it's, it seems like we can very tangibly say.
it's, it's, it seems like we can very tangibly say, most of the town doesn't want that. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah.
Right? We know Big Box, we know, eh, you know, you know what I mean? We know what people don't want.
But things change over time. Because when Energy got built, people would say to me that didn't live in this town, why did your town allow those ugly buildings with those ugly things outside? Which nobody knew in those days really what the netro- and now we're all so happy to have that building in our town. And it's an amazing building if you go inside.
Oh, yeah.
Do you know what I mean? So that's, I'm just being the devil's advocate to sort of what you're saying. Things do, I, I get where you're coming from and I can go around and take pictures of what I wouldn't want. But there are some buildings that started out and people didn't like them so much in the beginning and now we're proud to have them. Oh, I've got a lot of people say to me, what?
There were some people who are non-residents who were saying that, it's ugly building.
I could name some names, but I'm not going to. Yeah, John's right.
Yeah.
But now we're proud to have it. So that's just my two cents on that. It's a hard.
Well, so I think that speaks to the need to define what the problem is that the regulation is hoping to solve, right? So it's one thing to be familiar with the types of architectural, um, trends and standards that today's developers are using. Um, it's another thing to be able to say, what are we trying to do that? What's, what's the, what are we going to accomplish by being more specific? Um, and, and, yeah, eh, think, think about that. I'm sure if we are consulting, that's the first question they're gonna ask is, why are you doing this in the first place? What are you trying to make happen?
At this point, while, while we're all having a discussion about what is this new category, this new view that we're gonna give the town, uh, I, I'd leave it wide open for us to show, don't do this, or I'd really like it if you did this. I mean, just.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
The, you know, the horrible, horrible designs and show us like, I don't want that.
Yeah.
And then we can find a way to turn that into words and diagrams that are regulations and, and that are legitimate legally and, and respond to our community.
We could all bring a little bit of Brosco.
Sure, absolutely.
So I don't wanna, the other thing I was wondering about, do we, that I don't see in here, and it's come up a couple of times. I don't know how we wanna move on it, but it was the whole concept, I know, um, Rolf was pretty big on it. But the whole idea of designing, especially the larger subdivisions with the lands, with the contours of the land and all of that in mind versus, I've got ten acres of flat, I'm just gonna go. It's, you know what I mean?
Right.
I don't know how you would regulate that, but, you know what I mean? It's an interesting thing that lends itself to that design and that character of the neighborhood and stuff. It's not just grids, it's, you know? So.
I sort of remember some language that spoke to me about topography and.
So there's that, and then, sorry, I've just seen things like five, two, two, four, number five, freestanding commercial signs. So freestanding commercial signs should be limited in this area to avoid the appearance of strip development. So when I see should be limited, who gets it and who doesn't? You know what I mean? I think it should be one or the other.
Yeah, should is an advisory term. It's not a, you must. It's a, we would like that to happen.
Excuse me though, doesn't our, our sign rules take care of that?
Um.
Do you get my question?
I think the point of this statement, when it was put into the regs for this northern gateway area, was to provide a, a sense to people of what wants to happen there. Uh, it's, I mean, it's possible, right now, we allow one freestanding sign per lot.
Right.
It's possible someone could do a subdivision of a section of that northern gateway and have several lots, you know, with frontages along one sixteen with a freestanding sign on each of them.
Oh, okay.
Um, and this is trying to say, utilize the greater allowance you have for signage as a, at, on your building rather than planting, um, these things out in the, in the field. But Jeff's right. It's, it's an advisory, um, statement. It's not a, it's not a shout.
That you expect?
Well, it sounds like it's.
Will be.
I know we're saying we want them to use the greater building. I get that, what we're trying to get at. But I'm saying it's a loophole where somebody could say, well, it should be, but in my case, I can't, so I'm gonna do this. And, and then when that comes to the DRB, they're kind of in a rock, kinda hard base, something, you know what I mean? Do I go?
Yeah.
This way? Do I go that way? It's not real clear, so I don't know.
Why wouldn't you say will be then and just?
That's what I'm kinda saying. Is it this or is it that? And just say whatever it is.
Right, exactly. Put it right out there.
Well, how about number two, yeah, that says, development shall be set back to allow for pedestrian multi-use paths and so forth.
Definitive statement, isn't it?
Shall means you must do this.
Yeah.
You will do this. I guess what I'm thinking, do we wanna say shall there?
Yeah, I think you do.
Oh, freestanding commercial signs shall be limited in this area?
No, so, uh, uh, number, number two, under location, development shall be set back.
Is it two minutes away to say what?
They're opposing that directly, uh, rather than placing buildings directly on one sixteen for additional village design, development shall be set back, which means you take the whole flat-fronted setback and move it back fifty feet, but you don't. Then you don't have a possibility of there being a variety of setbacks, which you might want.
But it, but in this case, I mean, this, this is northern gateway.
Right.
It's specifically talking about, you know, the one sixteen corridor.
Right.
Right? Where we've just gone through the, the official map and said, we basically want a linear park in this space. So, so this is, this is just another embodiment of the official map.
Of letter A on the map.
At le- at least on the west side of one sixteen, th- this requirement would apply to the east side as well. And we may, we may wanna revise it, so it is more specific to that west side if that's where the linear park wants to be.
That's, that's what I was getting at, but.
But wasn't the idea also, as you come into the town, it kinda. You know what I mean? So you're in the woods and then you're kinda there and then you're, and it slows cars down and it, it's a natural sort of. I thought that was something too.
Could be done with landscaping as well, on both sides of the roads, strong tree lines. Go in, uh, to Newport and drive north on the main street. It's gorgeous trees and then well behind them are the big houses. But the line is established by the, by the landscaping. I, I, I mean, it's just, I know on the west side, we've got a two-hundred-foot wide strip. As a very definite thing that we want done. But on the east side, we don't say, except this applies to the east side. Why does it have to be that way on the east side? I've always thought of that two-hundred, that hundred-foot deep piece on the west side is very much of an element on its own, distinct from the development further west. Whereas on the east side, those, that development area is, is from one sixteen as deep as the lot is. And let it, let it, let it wander some along there in terms of setback.
Yeah.
Building, building setback.
Part of it was also, we were talking about pedestrian and multi-use, right, bike. Bike pads and stuff like that versus, I'm on a sidewalk right next to one sixteen and a building, you know what I mean? I've got some room there.
Room there.
Yeah.
And we're proposing and we're, I guess, building a sidewalk on that side.
On the east side.
On the east side, from, from the gas station all the way.
Yeah, think about the topography from the, from the gas station to Riggs Road. You, you go down, you go down into wetland.
Right.
Right? And from Riggs Road north, you, you go up steep slope.
Over.
Yeah, you just, just looking from one sixteen, you know, e- immediately east, you gotta, you gotta severe slope right there that, you know, is, you're gonna have a hard time dealing with anything less than fifty feet.
We go back down into a wetland, then you have a house right here on the corner.
Right.
Yeah.
What's, what, uh, Alex, maybe you recall, what is the pattern of what Jan and, and her designers are proposing on the east side for their development? Those, they aren't making a solid line.
No, they do have a pretty, a pretty large setback from the road right away with, um, a sidewalk that, that is along the road frontage, but is offset from the traveled portion. There, there would be a green belt in between and it varies.
Are the buildings all?
Well, so their original, their sketch plan shows, um, a sort of campus of buildings, um, closer to the, how do I describe it? In front of Energy, so just to the north of Riggs Road.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and I think there would be three to four buildings, two of which would be on the one sixteen side and two sort of behind them. And I think they would have a similar sort of approach to the frontage. And then on the south side of Riggs Road, it's a, it's a very different, uh, layout. Uh, and I don't think they're looking to have a uniform setback from the one sixteen between that first campus area I mentioned and the, and the lower one to the south.
They're proposing something that who's.
Yeah, I think, I think so.
And then when you get to the hump.
Then it goes residential.
Residential and that's a very different pattern and doesn't really relate to one sixteen. It relates to the interior road that they're creating.
Yep. Yep.
So there's a lot of variety there, I.
I think so.
I guess, I guess that's, that's okay.
The last one I had, a lot of the people, is five, six, four, exterior lighting. Did, uh, so I get it. Did we wanna say, and maybe it's too harsh, should we say as per Dark Star standards? Or whatever it is, dark sky standards? Would that be too limiting?
Um, I think actually this might have gotten changed because, uh, we did adopt the, you know, a whole new outdoor lighting section. And I, I, let me check. I have the current regs here. I think it just refers to that, uh, section of the regs now.
Okay.
Which would, I think, is the most appropriate thing to say because that section of the regs is now very robust. Let me check.
So you were mentioning kind of a topography thing before, topography thing before. Jeff, the fit in development and into the, the land and. I didn't, I, I thought it was here, but I don't see it, so.
Yeah, that section on exterior lighting, uh, what you're reading is the old version. The new version says shall conform with the outdoor lighting requirements in section five twenty-nine.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't mean to skip ahead on you. There, Joe.
No, no, I'm skipping all over. Brain is slow.
Um, did we wanna put in language, if it's not here already, about landscaping? We've talked about this before, where trees are planted per the regs and then they die in six months and they just stay dead. And, you know what I mean?
So, yeah, we've, uh. We've, we.
They're on a mission now.
We have, that's true. We are on a mission. Um, no, we added that in the housekeeping changes.
Yeah, I thought so, okay.
Uh, to the landscaping standard. So, yeah, I apologize. This excerpt of the regs is something I did, uh, for you guys uh, some time ago and the regs have changed.
It's down here too, eh?
So, we've, we've definitely dealt with that. We have the authority to, to say you've gotta replace by the next growing season.
So the very bottom of, of page six.
Yeah, it's on there. I just, sorry, I must've missed it. It's letter E down there. Maintain some responsibility.
I think a lot of things have gotten replaced this summer.
Landscaping wise?
Yeah.
Well, some stuff has. We, unfortunately, the, the compliance checks that we started, um, last year or put people on notice that we were gonna do, I wanted to do in the, in the early summer and we didn't get to it until, we're not getting to it until now, so.
But I think your letter prompted people to do.
Yeah, there were a couple folks, uh, that came in, uh, proactively. Green Mountain, uh, Access came in, Champagne Valley Telecom and, um, Dave, David and Maureen Blanc and one other landowner came in. Yeah, well, we, we've been, he's a special case. We've been working with him for some time because his stuff has been dead for some time, but. Yeah, I think that you'll see even more next year, next summer, because we will have completed the inspections and we'll be working with the businesses to update their plans or just replant stuff that needs to be replanted. So, yeah, look again next summer.
Does that apply just to the village area or? I went by the solar installation on McGee Hill today and.
Mm-hmm.
There's some dead stuff there.
Yeah, we, we don't have any power to enforce the, the landscaping for that facility. But if there's an approved landscaping plan for other sorts of projects outside of the village, we do. So, the, there are areas down where Marie, uh, Marie's business is that, you know, we are looking at. And, uh, uh, yeah, eh, basically, anything that's non-residential goes through a site plan review and may or may not have had a landscaping plan requirement, you know, back in the day. It's funny, we're finding lots of projects that haven't come back for any approvals since, you know, nineteen eighty-two. And unfortunately, back in nineteen eighty-two, there weren't, we didn't have robust landscaping requirements and some of their site plans don't show any. And so there's nothing we can hold them to.
But there was a landscape plan approved as part of the McGee Hill Road Solar.
Yeah, it's not by us, but by the public utility commission.
The Utility Commission.
Yeah.
And we can be their eyes.
Well, that's true.
And we can send them a, an official letter from the planning department that says, some of the trees in this location are dead.
Yeah, we could do that.
Get on, get on your people to.
Probably be better to send it directly to the, uh, developer o- owner 'cause, um, they, they would likely be responsive if they got a kick in the pants.
Right. So I'd say, do that.
Hopefully that.
Okay.
This has been a difficult summer and a lot of things have died, I think. And you might wanna give them till next summer.
Way or tell them, you know, we noticed that.
Right. No, there's nothing wrong with that.
You will.
Right.
Yeah.
We don't have to show up with a SWAT, SWAT team or.
I will tell you honestly, at the moment, we have our hands full just dealing with the projects that we actually have jurisdiction over. Um, so I'm not sending anyone up there to count trees on the McGee Hill. But if you wanna do that as a citizen, you know, interested citizen volunteer, I wouldn't begrudge you and it would be happy to. Happy to take that information and pass it along, you know, uh, so it came from the department versus just you.
It seems there is one item on the new renovated old police station that hasn't been taken care of in terms of landscaping. And that's a tree that the town said they would plant.
Okay.
The Nord just discovered, discovered that, so, so you get to enforce.
Yes, well, we've already, we've already been in touch with ourselves on this, the site plan for this facility. Cause there were several trees that died at the end of the drive to this facility. And so thankfully, um, Paul Wizrak, the tree warden, um, planted some additional sycamores to make up for those. Not in the same spot, cause he said, something's changed with the drainage. It doesn't make sense to plant trees there, but we'll plant them up a little higher here.
Yeah, Paul did the landscaping on the old police station.
Yeah.
He did, that's right.
I think that he did, they changed some of that landscaping, not the tree that you're talking about, but around the building because it looks very robust now. And at the beginning of the summer, I thought, ew.
Looked a little skinny.
Yeah, they just looked, it looked shallow.
Installed at the end of last year.
Right. And then it didn't look great this summer at the beginning, but now I think it looks very nice. I like that building, by the way. That, that would be one of my buildings I would take a picture of, John.
Yeah.
Which one?
Yeah.
The old police station. But I've had people get very angry at me because I said that, that live in town. But I think it's great.
Wasn't even worth fixing.
I know, but it looks very nice now.
That's because all those people who said it wasn't worth fixing were wrong.
That's right, John. You are right. I agree.
There might still be a difference of opinion about that, John, but we won't, we don't have to talk about that now.
There is a difference of opinion, I guess. Um, yes, and somebody mentioned on Front Porch Forum that how nice the old Jprick House is starting to look, which is.
Holy cow, talk about a.
They've really. They've really gone to town.
Complete gut job and exterior renovation.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, they were going, how far are they going?
Yeah, but now it's really starting to.
Yeah.
What a difference.
It's great when old properties like that find an owner who has resources to be able to do that.
There's work on the building right at the end of Main Street here before the curve, where they've put in a new walkway and steps going up to the porch.
Oh, the apartment house, yeah.
If you look back through to the back, there's an old, beautiful old garage that they're putting money into repairing that as well. And you can see it from the road as you pass by, so it's not behind another building. It's like you drive right in and there it is.
Yeah, they, they, that's Rob Bast and Carl, Laura Carl Smith who own that.
They've been fixing.
They've been fixing up that barn in the back and put some real, real uh, money into the foundation and.
Imagine that someday they'll finish that or something.
Yeah.
Um, also on the corner up here, the little gray house where the stone wall got built years ago that Andrew, um, in back, they've built a stone wall that I keep eyeing. Looks really nice. You know, it's not real visible from the road, but yeah, a lot of things have happened in town this summer, I think. Little things, small things.
Have you been to the new rec fields? I know you have.
I haven't yet. I just eye them from one sixteen.
It's really, really nice.
Yeah.
I was really surprised, because they do soccer out there, kids, and it's, you just, it, it's a different way to look at the town over there.
Isn't the new amazing?
And it's just like, whoa.
Towards one sixteen and it's just.
It's just like, it's gorgeous. Hill ridges, mountain tops, it's really cool, yeah. I was really impressed, so, anyway.
Yeah. Well, this addresses to Jeff, because you've always, you're always emphasizing the, the walkability of Heinsburg. And I was talking with someone today who said the reason they moved to Heinsburg, because it was walkable.
Yeah, there you go.
Yes. Perfect.
Well, that's good.
Okay, lull in conversation.
You want to do minutes?
Let's do minutes. Okay, so minutes of not August twenty-second, but September twelve. And I was not here, so.
Nor was I.
No comment from me.
On page two, paragraph kind of in the middle of the page, a member of the public said it's important to consider private landowners, et cetera, in there. It seems to me that, Alex, it could, this could use your uh, work to, to say what you said. I, I don't think this clearly.
I did have the suggested change on that in that spot, actually, so read. The second sentence reads, Alex W. replied that we do not ask permission, but the landowner gets notice and an understanding of what that means. I was gonna suggest um, changing it to say Alex W. replied that we do not ask permission, but seek input and discussion. And the landowner gets notice and an understanding of what that means. It's not a whole lot different, but it's, I think, I think, I was trying to make the point to the person that, that, no, it's not a, it's not a permission-based um, request, but it's a, it is a discussion and they get to have input.
Yeah.
That's good, I think, and that is what you did.
I also had one on the paragraph before. It says, sort of towards the end of the paragraph, Alex W. replied that it, parentheses, location, doesn't seem robust enough to him to put on the map. We were talking about the um, the possibility of, of having a community facility up by Triple L Trailer Park. I would change that to Alex W. replied that uh, the discussion to date about the, such a park doesn't seem robust enough to him to put it on the map. It wasn't that, the, the location wasn't robust, it was uh,
Our discussion.
It was just that it hadn't been fully fleshed out yet, the discussion.
I love the blow-by-blow description at the bottom of that page of Alex and I discussing whether or not there needed to be a scoping study.
Yes, Miss Erin on the side of transcripty over there.
Hey, I can pare it down, just say the word.
Also on page three, right after the Boy Scouts left the meeting, uh, the last sentence, Dennis uh, said we should be sensitive because they are looking to donate this, to the cemetery. I, I know what that means, but I think it might help to, somebody reading this would say should be sensitive to the interest of the present owners because they are looking to donate to the cemetery, just to complete that thought.
Might be good to put the word land after donate too. Donate land to the cemetery.
Right, not donate.
Not money.
I mean, or, or bodies.
Bodies, right, yeah. Thank you for going there first, John, making that joke.
In the one, two, three, fourth paragraph up, the last sentence there, next to the last, Alex replied he will get John K. the state of stormwater regs and see if these are well defined. Did, did you do that?
I did not do that, John. I looked, I looked back at the source document and they used that same terminology. So I felt we were covered, but I, no, I did not do that. I can, I can do that. I just have to remember to do that. Make a note.
And where Dennis P. brought up rapid flashes? Because people, they think, I think you just want to get rid of they.
And on page four, uh, the paragraph under village standards, it's sort of in the middle of the bottom. Dennis wondered if a landowner who has an official element, official map element on their property, that one. I thought that was confusing. I, maybe that's what you said. I mean, you, I, not meaning to correct what you said. Or I couldn't quite follow.
Like the landowner had G on there and then they built, but they have to, you know, so many square foot of, what did you end up saying on that one?
They wanted to build, to do eighty units.
Where are we, what page?
Are we saying that, that we show, like, on the Mechanicsville site, where we show G? Just as an example, but, so they have to leave G available for the town to develop. They don't have to develop it, but they have to allow that area to be set aside, two point some odd acres, you calculated.
Yep.
But they also have regulations based on how many units they put in and how much commercial space they put in to provide a certain kind of recreational facilities, which they do have to develop.
Or Alex said, can they put the money toward that?
Right, can they put that essentially on G and then, so we don't get twice as much or?
Right, I, I think Kate captured it. Given the choice, it's more likely that they will choose to put their public open space in the area that's demarcated on the official map. Not required to, but.
And, and what I'm saying, in addition to that, that means we're saying that's okay. You don't have to leave this space and develop it. If you want to develop this, end of story. That's all we want?
Because G's more, G is more likely gonna be bigger than what it would have been if you just left it alone and they developed that whole property, right?
Uh, that depends on how big the development was, but maybe, uh, yeah.
I mean, I think we're gonna look at what the potential was there and make that the size, roughly the size of what it would have been if they had just, it wasn't on it.
If it went by the regulations of, for every two hundred square feet or, you, you know, whatever.
Well, I, I think the minutes are accurate, if that's what you're getting at. If you want to re, discuss it, that's a different question.
Yeah, that is a different question. Yeah, I, I was raising the, the other question, not the minutes. The minutes say what we talked about. I'm just thinking about, what does that mean? What does that imply for how much open space we are trying to develop? Anywhere, anywhere in town.
More time to talk about that at your follow-up meetings when we get the feedback on the design standards and people start coming in asking, what did you put on my land?
Right, right. You're right, this is, this is not about the minutes. The minutes were good.
Other comments, changes, additions, deletions? Anybody for a motion?
We'll make a motion to prove the minutes as amended.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Abstentions?
I abstain.
I abstain. I think you still got five. All right, I think we are on to other business.
So um, if I could just tell you a couple of things that, that are not on the bullets. Uh, just in the last couple days, the town of Shelburne sent a notice about uh, one of their Planning Commission public hearings on a proposed regulation revision. I will, it's in your Dropbox for tonight's meeting. I added it today. And I can forward you the email, but I just wanted to get it on the record for tonight's meeting, that they are having a public hearing on October twenty-fifth. Plenty of time between now and then, if you're interested in looking at what they're doing. Um, I only briefly skimmed what they're doing. It looks like they're making some significant changes to their PUD requirements, including, I think, requiring that at least in one rural district, that every project has to be done as a PUD, which is an interesting thing. And adjusting how much required open space has to come with a PUD. I think they're changing it to sixty percent of the lot. Um, anyways, they're making a couple other changes in their zoning, so check your Dropbox and um, I'll make a note to email that to you as well. As I imagine that's, might be easier to just have it show up in your inbox. And I gave you a list of some upcoming workshops and training opportunities in the email I sent uh, for tonight's meeting, the pre-back-end email. So just check that, if there's any that you're interested in and you want more information, I've tried to give you links and so on and so forth. There are a couple of additional ones that uh, came to my attention since I sent that email out, so I will mention those, not rehash the others that are on the list already. Um, on October tenth, um, in South Burlington, there's a workshop on municipal energy improvements, emerging opportunities. Uh, and they're talking specifically about uh, ways that, that municipalities could improve their um, vehicle fleets and their town building, energy efficiency, stuff like that. Um, opportunities to do a better job with our own in- infrastructure on the energy side. So that's October tenth in South Burlington from eight to eleven thirty a.m. Seems very right up the alley of the Energy Committee, so I, I think it's probably, I, I'm gonna make sure they know about it, but uh, I'd be surprised if one of them didn't go. Um, and then a final one to add to the list is November sixteenth. And this is in Middlebury. It's an all-day affair. It's the annual meeting for the Vermont Energy and Climate Action Network. Acronym VCAN. So they meet once a year and uh, if you're not familiar with the network, Google it, they have a website. It's a way for um, it's a way for energy committees and energy coordinators in municipalities to, to sort of share information and understand what's going on uh, in different communities. And so this is their annual meeting to, to help with information exchange and such. Speakers, the whole nine yards. And then back to the bullets, uh, your fall meeting schedule. Oh, I'm sorry, no, there is one other important one. Kate wasn't gonna let me forget this one, right? Uh, so here in town, the Conservation Commission, which Kate is on, uh, is, has been uh, trying to work on a project, a mapping project, and uh, it's part of what they're taking from the town plan, action items that they're supposed to be working on is having better natural resource data and information and maps. And so uh, they've organized a speaker to come in from, somebody who works with National Geographic, actually, to talk about um,
It's actually native geographic.
It's not National Geographic. Damn, I thought it was like the big boys. Okay, well, I take it back, native geographic, which I don't know what that is, um, to talk about how uh, you know, how other folks have accomplished that and what the opportunities might be to improve data, and Kate probably knows more than I do.
Um, yes, we would love to have as many of you as would like to attend. Um, we are trying to gather information about what would be useful to other members of the town, um, not just us, but Planning Commission, DRB, SLIFOR. Um, what would you like to know about the natural resources we have here in town that would be beneficial for your planning purposes? Uh, it could be anything from where, you know, specific things are located, buffer, road crossings, um, you know, you name it. So we're looking for ideas. Um, Jesse has been involved with planning uh, and making maps in other towns, including Charlotte, and um, has a good knowledge of sort of what's possible. So he's gonna present to us and then hopefully people will attend and bring ideas about what would be useful to you.
So that's October seventeen at seven p.m.
I could add that the Heinsburg Land Trust has also been communicating with the planning, with the uh, the same.
Conservation Commission?
Group Conservation Commission, the folks in Charlotte.
Oh.
We definitely are gonna have some people go to that meeting as well. Uh, because we think it's a, a very valuable thing to do. The, the Charlotte work is, is quite thorough and quite complete and is a great model for what Heinsburg could do to identify natural resources.
And that's here on October seventeen?
The location was to be determined, but I assume it's here at the town office.
Either here or maybe at the library.
And if it's seven, right?
Yep. And then the last item I had for you under other business was um, the fall meeting schedule. Uh, so I'm, I can't be here for your second October meeting. I have a, another planning uh, conference to go to. Um, but we're sending a letter out to landowners and we're telling them that you'll be here to receive their comments. October tenth, twenty-fourth, and then your two November meetings, so um, I assume you can marshal on without me for that meeting. I can prep you for it. I, I wondered if other people have uh, issues with the fall meetings or if everything is just gonna roll along as expected, second and fourth Wednesdays.
So if I'm gone from the sixteenth to the twenty-third, I don't miss the meetings. It's before and afterward.
Yeah, the twenty-fourth is the meeting and so fourteen days prior is the tenth, so yeah, yeah, that's good timing.
Yeah.
I will not be able to make the tenth.
Okay. Yeah, you're welcome to let me know offline, um, you know, which ones you can't make. I just wanted to put it out there in case. Uh, well, just again, so people knew, we're, we're inviting the public to come to those four meetings, so we really do need some of you here for those. Um, and I can't make one of them.
And which meetings are those? The tenth, the twenty-fourth?
Yes, the tenth, the twenty-fourth of October and the fourteenth and the twenty-eighth of November. This is the first November that I can remember that the, the second Planning Commission meeting doesn't conflict with Thanksgiving.
It's the night before.
No, Thanksgiving this year is on the twenty-second.
Twenty-second.
Oh, really?
Because November starts on a Thursday this year and that's why it's, it's early. So your second meeting is the week after Thanksgiving.
So I'm gonna miss. When?
Twenty-eighth.
The twenty-eighth.
After Thanksgiving.
The 28th after Thanksgiving.
November 28th.
After the Turkey Lane Turkey Drive.
And I'm going to unfortunately miss both the 14th and the 28th, because you picked up when I'm leaving and when I'm coming.
All right. No Dennis...
We secretly found your schedule, Jeff.
Or Jeff on the 28th of November.
And I'm missing the 14th as well, unfortunately.
14th, no Jeff.
And the water allocation on the 20th. Is there any meetings first week of December? I don't believe so.
I don't know. Hold on, I'm trying to get Jeff's. No Jeff on the 14th.
I think it's the 28th I won't be here.
Okay, I'll get that down too.
Looking lean for...
That's three of you on the 28th, so everybody else got to come. Barbara. And Dennis, your question was, are there meetings in December? The Planning Commission meetings in December are the 12th and the 26th, which you might want to reschedule. The DRB meetings are the 4th, that's the first week of December, and the 18th. So you...
You might not be here for that.
Yeah, well, we can talk about that when you're wearing your other hat.
The 26th is...
Yeah, that's out for me too.
I know, I'm going to start wearing them.
I'm sorry, James, I didn't get yours down.
October 10th?
10th, thank you. Sounds like you still have quorum for all these meetings, which is good.
And some of the meetings where the citizens are coming, you're not going to be here.
Just one, the one on October 24th, so the second one.
Oh, you'll be here the first one?
Yep.
The 10th.
The 10th.
Do you have a security guard too?
And will you have, will you have some sense of who might show up? You're not saying people should let you know?
No, I'm not telling them there's a, that they have to talk to me first. They could just come if they wanted. But depending on how many there are, I hope to do more than just the letter. You know, to actually make some phone calls and reach out to some people.
Would it, would it hurt to say, you know, if, if you know for sure you're going to be attending a certain meeting, would you let us know?
I don't know.
I don't know whether it's...
Yeah, I want to, I want to make them feel like they can come whenever they want and they don't have to...
Yeah, they don't have to arrange anything.
We never know who's going to show up and what questions they're going to have. We've always been able to work with it. There's no reason we can't.
Yeah.
That's all I have, except to tell you that I did go to two conferences in the last week. One was in the Northeast Kingdom, which was in a conference. It was a board meeting for the Vermont Planner Association. But I got to mountain bike on the Kingdom Trails, which if you are into mountain biking or even if you just want to see what a revitalized Northeast Kingdom community looks like, go to East Burke. It's remarkable what that outdoor recreation business has done for that area. It's, it's just hopping, and they are bringing in tens of thousands of visitors to, to bike on these mountain bike trails, which are really well-maintained, gorgeous trails.
How's that relate to Burke Mountain Ski Area?
It's right next, it's right nearby. So some of the mountain biking trails are on the mountain and some of them are more normal person like me, mountain biking trails. I did not bike on the mount, on the ski trail ones. But that area in there, Darling Hill Road and all that, it's just, just fantastically beautiful. And with all these trails on private lands, it's, it's really remarkable what they've done. And then the last two days I was in DC for the American Planner Association Policy and Advocacy Conference, where they educate those of us in the membership about what the policy priorities are for the national organization and then make it easy for us to go meet with the legislative, our legislative delegations to talk about that. And this year they were focusing on housing, so I got to go and talk to the various staffers, not the actual legislators, in Leahy and Sanders and Welch's office about housing. And also using Heinsburg examples and, and giving them some fodder to help try to get, you know, more funding out of the federal coffers for the programs that we've been able to tap, like the Community Development Block Grant Program in particular.
This was in DC?
Yeah, yeah. And thankfully, the APA chapter that, that I'm in, because I'm the legislative liaison and tracked legislation and Montpelier for the chapter, they picked up the bill for the trip, so that was nice.
Did you meet Donald?
Did not meet the Donald. Did have a quintessential DC moment, though, so we're having this conference. It probably was maybe 200 or so planners in a hotel, you know, right downtown. And so we have one floor where there's various rooms where they're doing concurrent workshops. And on Monday, Tuesday, yesterday was the day we went around to Capitol Hill, but Monday we're all getting educated. And you could tell that this one room next to one of the rooms we're using is being set up for some kind of fancy interview with television cameras and, what, special lighting? And I'm thinking, oh, the APA president must be making an announcement or maybe somebody from the administration is coming and they're having a, some... And then about 3 o'clock or 3:30, I walked by the room on my way to one next door for a workshop, and there are six very large Secret Service guys with, you know, the earplugs in. I'm like, this has nothing to do with what we're here for. And it turns out, not that this matters, but it's just sort of silly gossipy stuff. Turns out that Fox News had picked our little venue as the quiet, nobody-will-think-to-look-here place to have the interview with, their exclusive interview with Brett Kavanaugh and his wife. And that's who was, that's who was there for that little period. Anyways, silly DC stuff, but, yeah, no, no Donald, but in proximity to somebody who will be in the news tomorrow. In front of the...
I think that interview's been shown too already.
Oh, yeah, it was, the Fox News interview was shown, yeah, either yesterday or the day before.
I didn't see it.
The good part of the whole thing was that I think that some of the staffers in the, in our delegation's office weren't very familiar with Heinsburg and some of the ways we've used the, those federal funds here. I think Welch's office actually did do a visit to the cheese plant this year, so they're aware of that. But they were appreciative of getting those stories. And I told them, listen, you know, when it comes time to, you know, have to be talking about this stuff on the floor and you need an example from a small town in Vermont, you know, get back to me. I'm happy to give you more dirt about how those programs have helped Heinsburg. And I made the plug for, "And if there's anything you can do to help us with our wastewater system upgrade, because we can't afford what we're going to have to do there." They were all sensitive to that and said they'd get back to me if they could, you know, think of any other funding sources that our team hasn't already, you know, thought of.
That's a state issue.
Well, it, it seems that way, but it's...
Probably trickles down from the federal though, doesn't it?
It's the EPA that is the one that we are, that the state had to make the agreement with to have this happen, so...
Do you remember how much they paid for the bridge across over to New York?
God, who...
Oh, the one that we, that got blown up and rebuilt?
Crown Point Bridge?
The Crown Point Bridge? Nah, I don't know what the number is on that.
Well, the drawbridge you're doing, that's like a $51 million project.
Oh, yeah, because it sounds like...
That's a lot of money.
It sounds like they're building, they have to build a temporary drawbridge and then build the real drawbridge and then take down the temporary drawbridge.
For sailboats?
That's huge money.
Yeah, exactly.
I'm not taking down your bash.
Maybe we're off topic now, Joe, I don't know. I just wanted to share you the conversation.
Thank you.
Don't move.
Interesting.